Ladies and gentlemen, all to order, all right.
Please be seated. Colleagues and staff and colleagues and staff. For the singing of our national anthem here today, I'm pleased to introduce to you all Tiffany Chantelle. Tiffany is a London, Ontario based R&B soul singer. She's been singing and performing since the age of six, just a few years ago it seems to me, and has been recording in a studio setting since she was 16 years old. Tiffany is known for her strong and relatable personality and voice on and off the stage. Welcome Tiffany as you sing the national anthem and we join you. Please come through. And please stand.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise. The true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our lands glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Ladies and gentlemen, Tiffany Chantelle. Thank you colleagues, I was thinking before I read the statement regarding accessibility that we have a new fundraising idea for Council Morgan's support of our working through the multi-year budget. For those who don't sing the national anthem, it should be like Rotary where we do like a Rotary dollar fine. And Mr. Stafford, you did a great job of singing, the rest of you should all put a dollar into some fund, maybe the media replenishment fund or something, but you'll figure that through. So colleagues, I would like to read the statement regarding accessibility. And that is that the city of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council standing or advisory committees, meetings and information. Upon request and to make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. Council will break for dinner at approximately 6:30pm as and if required. I will look for any disclosures of pecuniary interest. Deputy Mayor.
And the fifth report of strategic priorities and policy committee item three or 2.2, City of London Service Review, review of service lottery options for municipal golf. I have a pecuniary interest, my father is employed by the National Golf Course Owners Association and the City of London is a member of that organization.
Thanks very much, any other declarations? See none, we have one recognition I'd like to call on, Counselor Van Hulst, please.
Thank you worship, it's with great sadness I announce the passing of great Londoner Mohan Mather, who was the chair recently of the Board of London Hydro, passed away last week. It was only I think less than two months ago, he was inducted into the Order of Canada for his tremendous contributions in industry and education. Mohan was also the dean of engineering at Western for a time. He was the CEO and founding member of the University Network of Excellence in Nuclear Engineering. He served on 15 boards in industry and education. And he also served with the United Nations and the Canadian International Development Agency. He's a very, a man of modest height but tremendous stature, great humility. It was an honor to work with him. He was a tremendous role model, he's done a great deal for London, a great deal for Canada. And we will certainly miss him in this city, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Van Hulst. I'm not aware of any confidential matters to be considered in public, so I'll look for a motion to go into closed session. Counselor Pelosi, second to my... Counselor Van Meere Bergen. I'll turn your attention to the screen.
Counselor Van Hulst?
I vote yea.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Colleagues, move to Committee Room Three.
Please proceed. Colleagues, before you, we'll put a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of January 28th, 2020 as their mover. Counselor Lehman seconded by Counselor Van Meurberg in any discussion. Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Colleagues, there are five communications on the agenda relating to item 11, 3.4 of the fourth report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I'm looking for a motion to receive the communications and refer them to be considered with the item which it's related. Is there a mover? Counselor Van Holst seconded by Counselor Salee. Any discussion? Then we'll call the vote.
Counselor Helmer. Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Thank you very much. I'm not aware of any motions which notice is given. And while I personally prefer Counselor Kayabaga providing the report for the fourth report of the Corporate Services Committee, I think we need to turn that over to Counselor Van Holst, I believe, which is not an unreasonable consideration.
Thank you, worship. I'm happy you put the fourth report of the Corporate Services Committee on the floor. It was a brief meeting, although we did conduct an election during that for the appointments to the Advisory Committee on the Environment.
Are there any items that colleagues wish to have considered separately? Seeing none. Any comments or questions with respect to the overall report? Seeing none, I will turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Thank you. A call on Counselor Lehman to present the second report of the Civic Works Committee.
Thank you. I'll present the second report of the Civic Works Committee. I've had no one approach me asking to pull items, so I would put them all on the floor depending on what you find out, Chair.
Any items colleagues wish to deal separately? Seeing none. Back to you, Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. Before I put all the items on the floor, I would just like to ask my colleagues to look at number eight, Dingeman Creek Sub Watershed. We are fortunate to have a presentation from staff. I think it's a really cool, innovative look at how the city addresses conservation and stormwater, looking at areas of concern that we have in our existing way we do things. It's pretty innovative, so I would ask that counselors get the slideshow and talk to staff about it. I think it's pretty fascinating. So I'll put the second report, all the items to vote.
So noted. Any other comments or discussions with respect to the Civic Works Committee report? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Thanks very much. I'd like to call on Counselor Cassidy to present the fourth report of Planning and Environment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've not been made aware of any items that need to be pulled.
Do colleagues wish any items to be considered separately? Seeing none, Counselor Cassidy.
So I will put the entire fourth report of the Planning and Environment Committee on the floor.
Any comments or questions? Counselor Turner.
Just speaking really briefly to number 11, the Victoria Parks Secondary Plan. It's been referred back. You can tell by the stakeholders from all points of view on this, it's going to be challenging to navigate. It has been challenging to navigate over the period of time that we've been dealing with this file. I hope perhaps we can find some resolution, but I'm not very optimistic. And I think at the end of the day, we may land on the planning assignments that are already there in place now. So we'll see how things progress, be looking for more input from the community as it comes forward, and hopefully staff are able to kind of bridge those gaps. But I think this is something that we'll have to watch and contemplate what our decision is at the end of the day.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Squire.
I'm glad that Counselor Turner said that. I think this might be a situation where you just took on more than can reasonably be resolved in one plan. And I think what we've succeeded in doing to some extent is making everybody unhappy. So I think that the approach that's being proposed by Counselor Turner is indeed may end up being the best solution to what is a very difficult problem.
Noted. Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Thank you. I'd like to call on the Deputy Mayor on the fifth report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee.
I will put the entire report on the floor with the exception of item three or 2.2, which was the review of Municipal Golf, for which I have already declared a pecuniary interest, and I'll need someone else to put that on the floor at the appropriate time.
Does anyone wish any other item dealt with separately? Back to you, Deputy Mayor. So that's items one, two, four, and five. Any comments with respect to those items? Counselor Cassidy.
Yeah, I just want to comment on item four or 4.1 from the report. And through you, Mr. Mayor, and to you, Mr. Mayor, and your colleagues that brought that motion forward, I just want to say thank you. I remember when we were working on the Rapid Transit project, and we had a consultant come in and speak to us on electrification of the entire fleet and the possibilities that existed there. And I do remember asking Ms. Pulejny, who was there, about the possibility of electrifying the regular fleet. And I thought that that was going to be a great thing to eventually happen. So again, thank you for bringing that forward and, you know, increase or speeding up the timeline for that because I think of specifically residents of mine who have a bus pass in front of their homes, they talk a lot about the noise. And so electrified fleets are much quieter than regular diesel. So I'm really happy to see this coming forward.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions on those four items? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Deputy Mayor.
Just need someone else to put that other item on the floor.
Counselor Morgan.
Well, I won't be as electrifying as Counselor Cassidy, but I'll try to tee this one up. I'll put the golf item on the floor.
I think that's out of order, actually. Counselor Van Holst instead. No, go ahead.
I'm happy to put this one on the floor. This is the golf item.
That was painful. Thank you very much. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 with one more case.
Thank you. Under added reports, I'll call in Counselor Squire to provide the fourth report of counsel in closed session.
It's my big chance. That on the recommendation of the Managing Director, Corporate Services and City Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer, with the concurrence of the Director of Roads and Transportation and Division Manager, Transportation Planning and Design, on the advice of the Manager of Realty Services with respect to the properties located at 579, 585, and 589 Adelaide Street North, further described as lots one, two, and three, Plan 194E being part of PIN 08277-0035LT, as shown on the location map for the purpose of future road improvements to accommodate the Adelaide Street CP rail grade separation project, following actions be taken, the agreement of purchase and sale submitted by Stingray Holdings Limited, the vendor, to sell that portion of the subject properties designated as Part Six, Plan 33R-20556, the property to the city for the sum of $476,500 be accepted, and that on the recommendation of the Managing Director, Corporate Services and City Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer, on the advice of the Manager of Realty Services with respect to the city-owned industrial land located Innovation Park Phase One, Part of Block Three, containing an area of approximately four acres located on the east side of Innovation Drive and being comprised of Part Block Three, Plan 33M-544, as outlined on the sketch here to as Exhibit A, the following actions: the agreement of purchase and sale, the agreement submitted by DanCor Construction Limited, the purchaser, to purchase the subject property from the city at a purchase price of $280,000, reflecting a sale price of $70,000 per acre, as Appendix B be accepted, and that on the recommendation of the Managing Director, Corporate Services and City Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer, on the advice of the Manager of Realty Services with respect to the city-owned industrial land located in Innovation Park Phase One, containing approximately 12.1 acres, subject to survey, located on the north side of Concept Drive, legally described as being Block Four, Plan 33M-544, save and accept Part One, Plan 33R-16973, and being PIN 081970140, as outlined on the sketch, the agreement of purchase and sale as Schedule A, the agreement submitted by 11850407 Canada Inc., the purchaser, to purchase the subject property from the city at a purchase price of $847,000, reflecting a sale price of $70,000 per acre, be accepted; that on the recommendation of the Managing Director, Corporate Services and City Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer, with the review and concurrence of the manager, risk management, on the advice of the Manager of Realty Services, the following actions be taken; the lease renewal proposal, the proposal as Appendix A between the City and Centennial House Limited, the landlord, for the lease extension of approximately 4,246 square feet of gross rentable area space located at 520 Wellington Street, units one to three, for a term of five years for the city's Risk Management Division, at a base semi-gross rent of $7.75 per square foot for the first year, $8 per square foot for years two, three, and four, and $8.25 per square foot for year five be accepted; and that on the recommendation of the Managing Director, Corporate Services and City Treasurer, Chief Financial Officer, with the review and concurrence of the Chief Municipal Law Enforcement Officer, on the advice of the Manager of Realty Services, the following actions be taken: the lease renewal proposal, the proposal as Appendix A between the City and Centennial House Limited, the landlord, for the lease extension of approximately 3,157 square feet of gross rentable area space located at 520 Wellington Street, units 11 to 12, for a term of five years for the city's Municipal Law Enforcement Office, MLEO, at a base semi-gross rent of $7.75 per square foot for the first year, $8 per square foot for years two, three, and four, and $8.25 per square for year five be accepted. And I'll move that and gratefully sit down.
Thank you very much. Is there a secondary? Counselor Lewis. Any discussion? Then we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. I'm not aware of any deferred matters nor inquiries, and I'm not aware of any emergent motions. Therefore, I will turn your attention to the bylaws, and I'm going to be looking for a mover and seconder for the introduction and first reading of Bills 78 through 88 inclusive and added bills 89, 90, and 91. Is there a mover? Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. I'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Colleagues, thank you. I'll look for a mover and secondary, second reading of Bills 78 through 88 inclusive and added bills numbers 89, 90, and 91. I'll look for that mover. Counselor Van Meurberg, and seconded by Counselor Hillier. Any discussion? And I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 15 to zero.
Colleagues, I'll look for a mover and secondary for third reading and enactment of Bills 78 through 88 inclusive and added bills 89, 90, and 91. Is there a mover? Counselor Lehman, seconded by Deputy Mayor Helmer. We'll call the vote. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Now we come to the favorite part of the meeting. As we adjourn, I'll look for a mover and seconders or mover. I've got Counselor Kayabaga, seconded by Counselor Lewis. We'll do a hand vote on this. All those in favor? Reasonably unanimous. Thank you very much.